Nine o'clock. Nine o'clock, Lyon County Board of County Commissioners, Thursday, June 6, 2024. Today's agenda action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. Board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration. Items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restriction must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of County Commissioners convening as other boards, members of the Board of County Commissioners, also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Line Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting, may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. Today's meeting may break between 11:30 and 1:30 for lunch. Today's roll call, we have all commissioners in chambers. Today's invocation will be given by John Poundstone at Joy Church. He is on Zoom. All rise, please.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. Heavenly Father, we thank you that you are present, that you are always good. We thank you that you absolutely love local government. You absolutely love the principles upon which our republic was founded. We admit that our country isn't a total mess, and perhaps the greatest hope for our nation is local government. We thank you that this is just such a gathering. Father, we ask you for your presence, your wisdom. And as we enter this election season, we especially ask you to remind us daily of the need for honor, dignity, and harmony. I bless this commission. I bless these proceedings in the masterful name of Jesus. Amen.
Commissioner Jacobson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on its own, in its own accord, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. It has anticipated the public participation to be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. If I have any public comment. I see none on Zoom, and nobody's coming to the podium, so we will move on. For possible action review and adoption of agenda. You had a chance to review the adoption. Do I have any input from the commissioners? Or the public? If not, I'll look for a motion to.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve the agenda by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item six, I'm certain, six A. For possible action, presentation accept a donation of a community picture, a moment in time from Omar Lopez. Sir?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Omar Lopez. I got Micah Tripple with me, Dave Bonback. Micah and I are actually now, I'm the president of the Chamber of Commerce, because my vice president. Dave was picked, purchased the first picture that we're going to donate here today. Last year, we had a barbecue on Main Street. We called it a moment in time. The purpose of what of it was to bring community leaders, community, the public, business owners, as many people as we could. We handed out food, burgers and hot dogs and water. And we, Micah came out with his camera. We took this panoramic picture. I would like to show it and show everybody what we did here. I would like to do another one here in the future. We're going to focus on first responders and our veterans. We have over 120 veterans in our, in our community. And I would love to highlight them and recognize them among our first responders. So this is what we're doing here today. I don't know if I have something to say, so I'm going to hand it over to him right there.
Thank you.
Just a quick recap on some Facebook posts that I recently put up, but as a Yarrington local morning race series, imperative that I get this opportunity to share people that are changing and reloading. And we are helping facilitate network. We want to help the CIOs. And above all, we didn't want to see our community made seriously, and then get this back up. So if you got any questions, ideas, comments, concerns, please reach out to me anywhere online, and you're ready to dive in and help. I guess the final thought is one person stands with us and they take the whole orchestra.
And with that, I think we're going to close. We just want everybody to know that the chamber is rebranding. We have a new logo coming. We want to be involved as much as we can. We want to help everywhere we can. We don't want to take over nothing, but we want to be an asset. And wherever we can, we want to be there. So count on us. You'll be seeing a lot more of us. I got a whole new board, and I hope you guys have a beautiful day.
Well, thank you very much for the donation picture, and we appreciate you coming in and talking to us.
We'll be bringing in a plaque also with it. It's being made as we speak, so once, once it gets done, I'll come and hand that off. So again, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Have a beautiful day.
Appreciate it. Okay, six B.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, that item was for possible action to accept the donation.
Oh, yes, for possible action. Any comments from the commissioners?
Make a motion.
Okay, any public comment on that action? If not, then I will look for a motion on the item six A.
I move to accept a donation of a community picture, a moment in time from Omar Lopez.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, you got a bunch of them. I'll take Commissioner Henderson. So a motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Six B. A public hearing. Bill number 24-02 for possible action, approve an ordinance amending Lyon County Code Title IV, Chapter 14, Section 1, increasing the fee from $3 to $6 per document on the recording of certain documents by the county recorder where the proceeds used to provide legal services for abused and neglected children in Lyon County. Go ahead, Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, Lyon County, control of the record. So the legislature has made changes in the judicial requirements for cases involving children and youth, and it does require that an attorney and a guardian be appointed to each case instead of, or a CASA, instead of one or the other. The legislature's method of making this not an unfunded mandate for the county was to provide this option for funding that, which is to increase the reporting fee on reporting documents. Not necessarily a nexus that I like. However, the options that we have are to decrease what we're providing for the other functions in the county that we provide or utilize this funding source so we don't have to pay for it out of our other revenues that have been dedicated to our general fund. So that is what's before you. Today is the option of whether you wish to use the legislators, legislatures recommended funding for this additional cost.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What? How, how much would increased revenue would this increase bring in?
So I estimate approximately $30,000. That goes up and down depending on the number of recordings that actually occur in the U. But that's the best guesstimate at this time.
Yeah, thank, thank you. And if I may, yeah, I, I don't see the nexus here at, at all. I understand it is a requirement placed on us by legislature that we have to provide these services. But to me, it's a countywide requirement, and the whole county should pay for it, not just the people to come in and record documents. So I'm, I'm going to be opposing those. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Did the, did our recorder have any comment about this?
The reporter, just like the courts, my understanding is she hasn't brought up a comment, and for or against on this.
Okay.
Commissioner Keller.
So when's the last time that we had an increase in that at all? Can we justify any of the increase?
So I don't know off the top of my head how long it's been. It seems like it's been a number of years. I would wager, wager say somewhere between five and 10. Since we changed, since we went from $3, and it was just a $3.
And that was in 2016, according to this.
So 2016, so not quite 10, but between five and 10 is closer.
Where I'm, where I'm going with that, is there a justification for any increase? Does that department think that that is it costing them more to do that?
Voice Department?
Well, the Recorder's Office.
So the Reporter's Office, as far as whether it costs more to report a document, the answer is absolutely it does because staff costs have gone up in that time period. The cost for the software go up on the annual basis. So $3 in 2016 obviously won't buy what $3, or $3 today won't buy what $3 in 2016.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. That's kind of an interesting point that you made because the $3 that, that were, were taking now doesn't go to Recorder's Office.
Correct. It goes for those same purposes to be used, was originally implemented when they were assigning the, the attorney or the CASA to those. So that was the original $3. Doesn't generate now what it did.
Right, but my, my point is the increased cost to the clerk's office and, and this increase aren't connected.
Not directly. I would, I would agree. The, the other, the only way I could say tangentially, going back to what Commissioner Keller is asking, is that $30,000 that this would fund would be $30,000 that we've allocated in the general fund that could be construed as being used towards increases of reporters' office over that time. Again, tangentially, I, I don't have a direct permission.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. And I don't expect you to have an exact answer for this. Your guesstimate will go a long way for me because you will have more closer. How many of these recording fees are paid for by Otis County citizens?
I I don't even have a number off the top of my head. I probably.
But it's safe to say that many of these are paid for by out-of-county residents.
For anyone who's purchasing property in Lyon County that lives somewhere else, an investor, a a large entity that's investing in houses, those type of things, those would certainly be paid for by people external to Lyon County. Someone purchasing their own home would be a Lyon County resident.
Unless they're moving in from.
Yeah, if they're coming from somewhere else, they, they aren't until they close on the book.
Because I know our, so I guess my point is, is this is a way to raise some money. Needed money, and it isn't necessarily funded on the backs 100% of Lyon County residents.
I would say that's enough.
I will be voting for this.
Commissioner Hendricks.
So that's what we're charging right now is already being used for this service?
The $3 that's currently being charged is, yes, being charged or used for this series.
And the $6, how would that compare to what counties around us are charging?
I haven't done that research. I don't know if they've charged the fees as allowed by statute or not, but I could look.
Anything further? Any public input? Since this is a public hearing, say that the discussion is terminated at this point, I'll close the public hearing and look for a motion. On six B, do I have a motion?
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending Lyon County Code Title IV, Chapter 14, Section 1, increasing a fee from $3 to $6 per document on the recording of certain documents by the recorder with the proceeds used to provide legal services for abused and neglected children in Lyon County.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three two. So the fee will go from three to $6 for legal services. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if you could state who was opposed for the record.
Opposed for the record, opposed would be Commissioner Hendricks, or Commissioner Henderson and Commissioner Hockaday. Okay, moving on to item seven, seven A for presentation only. Recognize Carrie Page for 24 years of service with the Lyon County Planning and County Manager's Office.
Oh. Gavin Henderson, Lyon County Community Development for the record. I do want to ask Ms. Carrie, please. I know you like the attention. Ms. Carrie Page, we extend our heartfelt gratitude to you for your remarkable 24 years of dedicated service to Lyon County. From the inception of the planning department, Carrie has been an integral part of our team, contributing her extensive institutional knowledge to the development process. Her expertise and commitment will deeply be missed. As she embarks on her well-deserved retirement, we wish Carrie all the best. I hope she enjoys this new chapter in her life. In recognition of her hard work and dedication, we are honored to present Ms. Carrie Page with an award signifying the county's appreciation to your 24 years of service. Thank you.
No big plans, just doing whatever I want to do and the time to do it. Yeah, full time then.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your 24 years of service. And she, she's new adventure. Okay, going on to number eight, Commissioner and County Manager Reports. Let's start with Commissioner Jacobson this morning.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. While I missed the, my son always plays in the basketball tournament over Memorial Weekend, so I missed the ceremony at the Veteran Cemetery, but I did get a chance to go out there and do a quick walkabout, and it looked, it looked great. Fernley is very fortunate to have that. Lyon County is very fortunate to have that in our boundaries, and it is, it is something special. Tradition we started years ago, FIS students go out there and volunteer to clean up for that and Veterans Day, and I'm, I'm proud to say they're, they're continuing to do that. And so I want to give a shout out to those kids who went out there and helped clean prior to Memorial Weekend. Attended a Human Services meeting, kind of highlighting or drawing attention to youth homelessness. And I want to thank Human Services for, for, for inviting me and, and letting me participate in that. Also attended a candidate night hosted by the friendly Republican women. I want to give a shout out to them for inviting all candidates, regardless of party affiliation, but I thought they did a wonderful job. Gave everybody a chance to kind of speak to their platform, and they do an excellent job in kind of letting people have, place an educated vote on what where their ideals meet with the ideals of the candidates, and so I want to thank them. And finally, I'm wearing, and maybe it's selfish, going to get to 100 degrees today, so I didn't really want to wear a sport jacket, but Dayton High School was kind enough to give me a few years ago shirt, and so I thought I'd wear that in honor of all of our seniors, and I wish seniors from all of our attendance areas in Lyon County a prosperous life, whether they choose to go to college first or just jump into their career or some sort of what I'm really gaining the favor of is these tech and trade schools. And I just want to wish all of those kids the best as they jump into their adult lives. So that's all I have, Chairman Hockaday. Thank you.
You, Commissioner Keller.
I attended Silver Springs Advisory Board, Nevada's NACO General Board Meeting, Nevada's NACO Public Lands and Natural Resources Committee, and the National Association of Counties Agriculture and Rural Affairs Steering Committee, and on that one, we basically went over our progress on the farm bill, and one good thing about it is that it's still part of Nevada, but they're, they put in a section on biofuels. It's really going to help out down south in Lincoln County. I also attended the FRW Candidates Night, and that was, it was nice to see everybody that's running, what their interests were, and hoping that we get some good leaders out of there. I attended the Northern Nevada Development Authority, looking at the problems we have with growth in the area. Also attended the La Houghton High Watermark Event, unveiling event out of La Houghton, and that was attended by quite a few kids, and it was, it was a good experience. Also attended the Memorial Day event in Fernley. It looked like we had a little less participation this year, but I don't know why, but it was a great event. So we had the Lieutenant Governor out there, and it was a good event. That's all I have.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to start a little different today. I, I picked out this tie today for a reason. This, let's take a look. Because this tie represents a minuscule amount of the American flags that would be needed to be placed onto graves of all the brave Americans that participated indeed 80 years ago today. We should never forget their sacrifice. That's why we're free. Thank you. Okay, so I attended the Nevada Association of Counties Board of Directors Meeting. It was actually an e-Lee, but I zoomed in because I wanted to save the county a few dollars for travel, but they did a really neat thing. They, they honored Senator Gokicchia for his many years of service to Nevada. He has been a voice for rural Nevada for a long, long time, and some of y'all might not know this, but he was the county commissioner for 28 years before he was a legislator. So we are going to miss Senator Gokicchia very, very much. One thing in the legislative building, you always knew where he was when you hear his laugh, because it would just roar through the halls. They also got a presentation from ironically Senator Gokicchia's son, J.J. Gokicchia, who is the Director of the Department of Agriculture, and that was a fascinating presentation. I didn't realize all the things that the Department of Agriculture does, that they, they do a lot of things in this state. You know, we also talked a little bit about the upcoming legislative session and, and some possible BDRs. Talked about one saying that certain parts of autopsy reports are not a public record, and then also certain voter registration information would not be a public record anymore. So that's two BDRs that NACO is considering. I also attended the Mount House cab the other night. They had a very good presentation from Lyon County, Central Lyon County Fire Protection District on some of the programs that they have to help people clean up around their houses and, and make them more fire safe. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendricks.
I met with NNDAs to see what's coming our way in the future. I attended the Carson Water Subconservancy District Board meeting, and we took a tour of the Sutro Tunnel prior to our meeting. Attended the NACO Public Lands and Natural Resources Meeting, and Vincent did mention that NACO is planning to use one of their BDRs to probably address the solar issue. Attended the Memorial Day events in Dayton and in Fernley. Attend, Dayton Valley Subcon- Conservation District actually had two meetings this month, and they're getting very close to choosing a district manager now. Attended the Silver Springs Advisory Board and the Stagecoach Advisory Board, the Comstock Historical District Board Meeting, and the High Watermark Presentation at La Houghton. We had over 100 students from Silver Stage Middle School that attended that. And I received confirmation yesterday that I'll be serving on the National NACO Public Lands Steering Committee starting in July.
Go ahead, Commissioner Keller.
I missed one thing that I wanted to mention. I attended the Fallon Range Intergovernmental Executive Committee, and we had a bunch of updates, but they are setting the timelines for when naval base expansion is happening, of how fast it's going and everything else. So they're kind of narrowing that down now because they're moving the highway out there by gabs to expand the base. So ended that. Thank you.
Okay, and my activities, of course, we all had a chance to be in the budget meeting. It's fairly short on the 20th of last month. Also attended the Smith Valley Conservation District and the Mason Valley Conservation District meetings. Of course, discussion of weeds, a lot of water, so we've got a lot of weeds, and of course, that ties in with the fire hazard that we're going to be facing this year, as we did last year. Everybody needs to make sure they get the weeds chopped down as soon as they can. We had the agenda review to make sure we had everything covered this week on the Commissioner meeting. Also, another evening event that I went to was the Walker River Basin Communities Foundation fundraiser. They've raised over $2 million for Mason Valley and Smith Valley in the last 15 to 20 years. It's, it's an auction and a dinner. And they basically have a lot of grants that they give to all the community activities. People can request money from them, and they do a lot of youth activities and other community activity events that need to be funded. So it's, it was an excellent activity, well-attended here in Yarrington. So for all those who attended and donated, I really appreciate that for the Walker River Basin. Also, the, today is D-Day, and I'm the same sentiments that Commissioner Henderson has. My dad was not a member of the D-Day invasion, but he was on USS Lexington when it was sunk in the Battle of Coral Sea. He did make it through. I'm here. Luckily, he made it, made it back from war alive, which we know that. Um, which uh, we know that our numbers are dwindling from the D-Day group. Uh, very, very few of them left, so uh. Just have to honor them today. We'll go on with the County Manager's Report.
Good morning, Andrew Askey, Lyon County Manager. Uh, I also attended the uh, Memorial Day Ceremony at the Veteran Cemetery in Fernley. It's really great. Great uh, ceremony and um. It's uh, it was just very cool to see everybody uh, show up and support that. Um. I keep my comments brief today. I've got a couple of items that I just wanted to make the board aware of. Um, the first one is that there will be a change order on the um. The Justice Complex that will be coming up. Here, we're waiting to get um, uh, some more information. It's just regarding the fencing in the parking lot. Uh, it was slightly above what I could uh. Could approve, um, so we're working on that. I hope to have that by the next meeting, but uh, it might be following that. Um. We're having to increase the the secured parking area because we lost some on the other side due to the stairwells and aggressive stuff, so um. That was the, that'll be coming shortly. Um, the other thing that I just wanted to remind everybody of is that um. Obviously, we canceled the July fourth Board of County Commissioners Meeting and so order any department heads have. Any items that need to be heard? Do they need to be on this next agenda that June twenty? So, I wanted to make sure that I threw that out and remind. That happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Commissioners? No? All right. Moving to item number nine, elected official reports. Any elected, uh, here comes Sheriff Pope.
Morning, Lyon County Sheriff Brad Pope for the record. It's been a minute, but uh. Had a few things in the news and uh, several of those have had. State Senators reach out and ask questions, so in case you guys are asking me questions, want you to know what's going on. Uh. The House of Silver Springs. There was reported from Joe Hart to uh, be a child neglect house. Uh, he shared the the photos of the inside of the house with Sheriff's Office. And within about two hours, we had a search warrant, executed that search warrant. Uh, he still thought it was necessary to share. You know, on his social media that law enforcement hasn't acted, uh, while we're active and serving the search warrant of the house, so. Um, that State Senators reach out and ask me questions about it. And so in case you guys are asked questions about it, uh. Yeah, but it's, uh, our goal is not criminally prosecute the parents. They're working now with Human Services to get the house cleaned up. The parents are working to get the house cleaned up. Uh, the fire department's going over there to help the house cleaned up. Uh, they are in the legal system, uh, District Attorney's Offices reviewing the case. Their goal as well is to get that family help. There's some mental health issues. That we don't think we're right, we're shared on social media, but uh, our most teams working closely with them. And our SRO is checking up on the kids daily in school, so our goal from the Sheriff's Office is to. Basically get them help, so. Um, we did act as soon as we knew about it. Another one is in the news is the uh, standoff in Mount House. Uh, went really well. Everybody went home safe. Our K-nine Kai. Uh, was deployed and that's the first bite he's had on a suspect. Uh, it was very effective with uh, very little injury to the suspect, so. Um, we sink a lot of money into our our canines and uh. He didn't sink a lot of his teeth in it, but it was effective and uh, caused the barricaded subject to uh, surrender. Minimal injury, so no injury to staff, so it went well. But I've had a lot of questions about that as well, so in case you guys get emails or letters or questions, you know. That's it. So business usual, that's the Sheriff's Office.
Uh, Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, yeah, Sheriff, uh, thank you, Sheriff Hockaday. Um, Sheriff Pope, I just want to, and I've. I wrote uh, gentleman's name down, but I believe you had a representative from the most team at that homeless meeting, um. That Human Service put on and he was very well spoken and did a nice job and I just I. Feel terrible. I don't remember his name to rec- okay. So, at any rate, he did a very nice job and uh, so just hats off to him there for kind of taking the lead on a lot of the conversation and. What's going on, so that was impressive.
Thank you.
Anything further? Yeah, congratulate the dog. I really appreciate canines. That's just, I I just, whenever I see him do their job, it's just phenomenal. Fantastic uh, asset to the Sheriff's Department.
He's probably the scariest dog we have, so.
Give him a dog, invest it for me.
One will see him bad.
And ju- just one quick comment, Mr. Chair, for me. Uh, congratulations on getting the new stuffed animal for the K-nine. I I got to get one of those out of my collection.
A lot of people like the Linda dogs, so she's doing well in the schools too.
Yes, true.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other elected official? I don't, oh, here we go.
Stacy Lindberg, Lyon County Quick Treasure for the record. Just kind of wanted to give you guys an update. I've also been sharing the news with with our sheriff. So um, I just wanted to kind of give you an update. I did uh, have a error on one of our ballots for the primary. So um, I've done, reached out to the candidates. We actually went and had a hearing in order to get a special election to make those corrections. Um, it was, I misinterpreted an NRS, newbie mistake, and I am, I'm sorry. Uh, that's all I can say on that. I. I own it and I'm fixing it and I apologize to the candidates and um, it won't happen again, so I didn't know if you guys had any questions or. Wanted to give any input on that because I'm sure you've heard it from your constituents. Um, so I wanted to answer any questions, if you had any questions about the process or how moving forward.
Anything, just, Commissioner Keller.
If it makes you feel any better, I've seen people in that same position that have been there for many years and and it happens, so.
Scott, I appreciate that.
Don't feel bad.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Yep, um, thank you, Chairman Hock. I totally agree. It's um, nobody's perfect. Uh, just, I was asked a question, the mail, if were there, if was some mailed in. Prior to the fix, how is, how, and they asked me how that was getting remedied and I didn't know, so I said I would find out.
Okay, no problem. Um, what the judge ordered is that those races, it was too late to change the current ballots. Because we had already received an east ballots, mail ballots, so what we're doing is we're voiding them from the project, so nothing will be counted in those two races. So e- everyone's voting their ballot as if they would, you know, fo- follow the instructions, voted or whatever, but there'll be no count of those two races at all. It'll be deleted and voided from our projects. So the only count that will be done for those two races will be for the special election that's held on July twenty-third. We're sending out uh, notices, sample ballots. I'm doing some publications. Um, we have about forty-seven hundred voters affected.
Right. Commissioner Keller.
So that's only in Fernley and Stagecoach.
Stagecoach GID, yes.
So the rest of them won't have any.
There, yeah, there will be no effect on any of the other races and um, there'll be no one else involved in those, that special election, but those two races.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, and and yeah, like things happen, right? And and it does, I'm just, but I am, I'm curious, what's the cost going to be?
Well, right now, I think the special election is going to cost me between right around eight thousand, um. Eight to ten thousand to run the special election.
Okay. Anything further? Right, thank you for the report. And I believe we'll move on to appointed official reports on item ten. Mr. Brucetta.
Uh, good morning, Bishop, David Brucetta for the record. Just two items real quick. Um, over the past year, we've had a series of challenges at the wastewater treatment plant, um, and so. Um, we're working with NDEP on uh, you know, addressing some issues. So I've asked our wastewater superintendent, not the the second meeting in July, to come here and give a presentation to you, just to give you some more details. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And then good news is, um, you've heard a lot in the news about a new set of regulations that's coming, the drinking water side side called uh. PFAS Regulations. Some of the local water companies um, have had some hits in it and. You know, if you do have hits, you're above the regulations, you know, within the next five years, there will be significant cost to utilities to uh, try and, you know, reduce the amount of these compounds in the drinking water. So we did our first round of testing. We have one more to go, but our first round of testing came back all negative. So that was significant, but you'll be reading a lot more about this in the paper as utilities start getting this testing results back. So I just wanted to end with that. Thank you.
Anything from the Commissioners? No. Any other appointed official? It's like Mr. Homestead's coming up.
Good morning, Doug Homestead, the Lead Director for the Record. Um, I'm going to give you a little rundown on one of the parks today. Um, my my park supervisor, Judge Smith, is here today from Dayton. And uh, his park crew consists of four senior parks workers and they cover a large area of uh, Central Lyon County and North Lyon County. Um, some of the issues we're having in the park is vandalism. Um, seems like almost every park. Uh, we have has vandalism. They address weekly. Um. The only ones we haven't had any problems with Dressler and and Silver City Parks and. That's because the communities there are really involved in their parks and um, they kind of self-police their uh, parks there. Uh, restroom's not being open is a big issue in in central. Uh, the, the people want their restrooms open, but if they leave them open, they get destroyed. Um, so we're looking at different issues. What we could do there is uh, maybe put in bulk toilets like the state uses in some of their parks where they're pretty much indestructible. Stainless steel fixtures and all that. Uh, but that's very expensive. Um. We're going to attempt to try at Penny Park in um. Silver Springs if if um, gets approved by you guys to spend some money there to put in some security cameras outside the restroom. Um, some special doors with um, time lock devices on them where they could be opened during the day. The sheriff is um, the up night area and said they would give more patrol there for us and um. Maybe try it out, see if it works. If they destroy the fixtures inside, then we'll go to start putting stainless steel fixtures. In all the bathrooms. We, we did try using portable restrooms, um, Santa Huts. Um, but the, they destroyed them and so we can't even get a vendor to deliver some Santa Hut in Central Lyon County. So. That's that issue. Um. We're using a lot of water in our parks. Um, at Mark Twain, we exceed our water rights every year, it seems like up there. Um, and they want more grass area because they have a jillion kids playing soccer and all that and they want more green area. So before we do that, we got to first of all, be be with, meet with um. Dayton Utility, see if they even provide us water for that, if the lines are big enough and all that, if we can even increase the park size. Um, at Mark Twain, our water budget is just totally. Um, spent. We use about four million gallons at um, Silver Stage Park there where we put the grass back in. And it costs us twenty-eight thousand dollars a year just for the water, which um. It'd be nice if Seth mutual water. I'd like to go maybe talk to them if they had a subject, a special rate for parks. Because that does bring community people into and help the community out a little bit, but. Um, I'm sure that we're one of their biggest users, but I think I pay twenty-eight thousand dollars in Silver Stage and Penny Park is about eleven thousand a year. And. Uh, and the worst problem this year we've had in parks is the tumbleweeds. They've been just inundated with tumbleweeds. I've never seen tumbleweeds grow this much than they have this year. Um, with the help of the Road Department and the Fire District, the Parks Department has burned twice at Santa Maria, that drainage ditch that. Um, to help keep the drainage ditch clear, just get the flash floods, doesn't affect the homeowners there, so. Thanks to the Road Department and Fire District for helping us out on that. Um, starting up the Silver City, um, working our way down, we have like one point five acres up there in the parks. And we've replaced fencing with the old um. Uh, split rail fencing, the horses would knock down and get into the grass and ruin the grass, so we put up iron, wrought iron fancy, nice fancy up around there. Um, we put in a new retain wall. That's the wall they talked to you guys about painting a mural on. Because the wood one was falling apart and we did some curbing around some play structures and we just completed the new roof on the community center. Um, some other work we're going to be doing up there is flattening out that their park is pretty steep. We're flattening out an area and putting some good shade trees in there to help. Cut down water usage and also give them some shade for picnic areas. Uh, we had a problem with a neighbor approaching on our property while I was actually, uh, someone was living in a motorhome on. On our property. We got them finally moved, they should have helped the Sheriff's Office. And they're slowly getting that cleaned up. Once they get that cleaned up, we're going to put a uh. Hopefully put a new fence up, so it kind of keeps their stuff off our property and our property clear. Uh, moving down to um. Mount House, um. We have Dandel Rose Park in the community center there at fifty-six Red Rock. That's about three acres we have there. We improved some drainage up there, replaced some damaged gates from vandalism. Uh, clean weeds and overgrowth from that park. It's kind of been neglected. Uh. Uh, new curbing for play structures, removed, removed a really bad play structure that was dilapidated and added a new swing set. And uh, we need to do some roofing on the structure to come and some more fence. Uh, we're going to move the fence at the community center back. From the front of the building to the back of the building, so we have more parking for the community center. Highlands Park in the end, uh, Highlands Drive in Mount House, about one acre. I went to BLM because they want to enlarge the park a little bit and put a swing set and more sidewalks in. And BLM's approved the plan, um, but we've never seen anybody in the park, so it's not a high priority to. You spend the money there right now, I don't feel, and tellers that really need there. I've yet to see anybody and and uh, Judge's crew has never seen anybody in the park. You see graffiti, but you know, see any vandalism. Uh, Santa Maria Park in Dayton, uh, it's about four acres. We took out a hump. We had so many kids playing soccer this year that they're running out of room, so. Um, we decided we could maybe use Santa Maria for that, uh, the grass area there. And so, but there was a hump in the middle of it, so uh, Park Skies took the excavator over there and took out the hump and leveled it and re-sodded the grass. And so next year it'll be ready for um, soccer use over there. We've also done a lot of moving of dead trees and limbs and we still have a lot of safety trimming on those big cottonwoods to trim up the trees. Uh, our park, did you come into Dayton there? Uh, we replaced some dead bushes, moved a huge dead cottonwood tree and we put some curbing around the playground. Dayton Ball Field's on Old Dayton Valley Road. Um, we installed new scoreboard, repaired the septic system, um, installed new curbing around the playground and replaced the drip line. Some issues we're having there, um, that we have to work on. We need to just get a warning track around the uh, back of the field for the ball field. And they've requested um, lights, Little League has. Um, but when I was checking the map, that not eighty percent of those ball fields are in uh, school district property. So I contacted the school district guy in charge of facilities and he's going to talk to his boss about. Just dedicating that land to the Lyon County, you know, moving the boundary. And supposedly, I don't know the history, when that park was put in, the school district was supposed to give that property to the county and they never did. So, and everything's changed since then, administration, all that. But I said, would you, you could gladly take it over and uh, we'd be happy and he goes, he goes, no, he said, I already got one turned, Yerickton turned it over to him and and uh, he says, I I can't keep up with what I got, so. I think they'd be more happy to uh, give us the property. And because I really don't feel right using our park tax construction money on it when it's really not in the, this, the county. Uh, Como Park and Dayton Skate Park. Um, we put some curbing for play structure there, replaced a couple of broken slides. We have vandalism there all the time. We kept cleaning it up and we, and replacing their lines. Uh, playground is at its life, over lived its lifespan, so we have to look at replacing it with a new, modern, uh, updated version. Mark Twain on Ruffin Road, that's probably one of the most used parks. It's uh, twenty-five, twenty-eight point five acres. Uh, we put new curbing and play structure in. Um. We have vandalism up there and that's where we had the bathroom damage of about seven thousand dollars um, that we fixed last year. Um, and people can check out keys from our parks from any time they want. If they use the park sign, just come get a key and they will check one out to them. Um. Some of the stuff they want, they want to do, complete the walking trail, which was approved by you guys, I think, a meeting or so ago to do that. They want to install some exercise equipment around, stations around it. And um. And new covers for the dugouts. And the committee has requested some basketball and pickleball courts. Patriot Park in the River Park subdivision there. It's about 2.3 acres. We installed a swing set there and we just have some drip lines and we got to move some rocks around the baseball court, the basketball court. So people don't fall and get hurt on some of the rocks that are around there. Spud Field in Sage Coach, so on Desert Lane there. It's been browned out. For I don't, when they browned it out, but I think it was during the downturn, they browned it out, the ball field. And it's never been open again. Yeah, we did open the park up again this year. Because people wanted to use it to walk around and stuff. And we stalled the new border around their playground there. The community's wanting to us to do something with the park and make it more usable. And so it'll probably be something that the park board will have to work on. And that park really has major issues with tumbleweeds. Pioneer Park is on Shione and Navajo Trail. Sage Coach is 2.5 acres. We remove vandalism there weekly, replace curbing playgrounds, installed all the closers on the gates. So the horses keep out of there. People break the auto closes off so you sell the horse lover so they can get the horses and get in the to get some grass. Silver Stage Park, it's been well used. It's on Highway 50 on Ramsey. Weeks there is about 15 acres. When we installed, when we did that project, we installed horse proof zigzag gates that that I designed. So horse with high fence and so far we only had one horse get in. It was a little colt. And he was small enough to figure out he could get around there. And so we got him out. So that worked. And so now we've we put some in at Penny Park because people there were breaking the gates off to allow the horses in there. So we put the same type of system in there. Well, we replaced pickings tables out there at Silver Stage and new curbing for the play structure. The, the sports leagues and community are wanting us to upgrade the snack shack, expand out the baseball outfield. So it can be used for a football field because they have a lot of youth football kids out there. So that'll involve another probably zone or two is sprinklers and more water. So we'll have to check with Silver Springs Mutual if they can provide that for us. Penny Park. Improvements, curbing for the play structure, installed those new horse proof zigzag gates. We're going to do some, they want to do some dugout covers, no, yeah, covers for the dugouts. They want to try the bathrooms, open them up. So that's going to take those expensive doors and locks on the bathrooms and some security lights and cameras. Silver State Skate Park, we installed that memorial last year with a walk path and bench in the memorial rock there. Removed all the dead trees and bushes. And removes vandalism. They're all vandalizing that little shed, the pick me table there. So those picks that up. Dressler Park is about 30 acres. We upgraded the well this year, replaced concession stands, windows. Replaced the tennis court asphalt with our parpa money and the fencing. Purchased new sound system for their rodeo grounds. Improvements that we're still doing is hopefully today you'll pass the contract for using park tax money to fund the installation of the rest of the equipment and sealing the ports and painting. Dayton rodeo grounds, about 80 acres. Repaired some drainage issues caused by the flood and improvements there is the water system, but we're talking a lot of money to improve the water system there and we don't, it's not used enough, I don't think, to justify that right now, currently. They were looking probably a hundred thousand dollars in mark. They also take care of the Silver City Cemetery. The community right now is doing an expansion project on led by Eric.
Obermeyer.
Obermeyer, yeah. And we went up there and put a gate, I believe, so they can get trucks in there, dump trucks into hall to build because it's a pretty steep slope there to fill up some dirt. So we have a place for more burial plots because there are a burial plots pretty much. Silver Spring Cemetery, we cleaned up the center gazebo area and repaired the water system. We have some fence repair we need to do and we have some dead trees we got to get out of there. Santa Maria Green Belt, about five acres, extensive weed burning there, re-removal. Repair drainage issues from the flood to protect the residence property. We still have a bunch of trees to throw and remove there too. Santa Maria Open Spaces down by the river. We had a lot of repairs we had to do to the walking trails after the flood and a lot of weeds, of course. And mowing all of them down. And we still have a bunch of trees to remove there too. Rolling a open spaces, that's about 276 acres. We had really excessive flooding damage down there, took out a lot of the the disc golf tees and stuff. And surprise how many people use that park for disc golf, even have tournaments there. But in fact, the river kind of changed course right through there too. And so it's a couple where the tees are, we have to move them to where it's dry now. We had extensive repairs there on the roads and tree removals and some of whom we still have to do is replace the golf tees, the disc golf tees. Dayton, we take care of the Dayton, we don't take care of the Dayton road medium and the the walkways. We have a contractor that does the mowing and stuff of it, but we take care of the, it's like cutting the trees and, and all that. And we've been busy removing trees and replacing drip lines there. We do the Dayton utilities billing. We start taking care of their yard now. We buy, borrow a lot of their equipment. So we felt it was right for them instead of them mowing their own yard. There guys, we, we had ground people, we but had to start taking care of their yard. Of course, then we took over the Fernley Senior Center and Human Services. And the just friendly justice area, that contract, mask keeping contract. And so we've been busy relocating trees for that building that the city, Fernley City, Fernley is building there, their community center, A K K, the Boys and Girls Club. So we had to move a bunch of trees and drip line there. So we use some of those trees over at the Justice Center. And the Justice Center, we had to remove some grass area. And a bunch of tree trimming and extensive work on the irrigation system. That's what the parks department does with their four guys and one supervisor. Some of the numbers we got for the sports participation is great. I think Dayton AYSO Soccer, they have about 431 kids in the spring and the fall. Dayton Silverado Bet Baseball, they have about 284 kids. Dayton Comstock Baseball is about 174 kids. Dayton Pop Warner Football and Cheer is about $250, 250 people. Silver Springs Cal Rippon Baseball is about 98 people. Silver Springs Pop Warner Football, we don't have any information, but I know last fall when I go by, there was always kids out playing football on on the field out there. And that's about all I have. Any questions you have of me or Judge? Well, Judge is here. Otherwise I'm going to send him back to work.
Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Not really a question. I just want to commend your guys. You guys, I mean, you got a small crew and you guys do a lot. I always see you guys out there. So and you know, the parks are looking pretty good. So we appreciate, we appreciate all your efforts.
They, I don't have enough time to go out and check on all the time and, and judge and his crew doing a fantastic job of it.
Commissioner Keller?
Thank you for the presentation. That was really good. I'm going to poll all four of your consent agenda items. So if you need Judge here at all, I'm going to be pulling those. You did talk about a couple of things that I just wish, wanted to check on. You said repairs for floods and stuff. Are you getting help through the Carson River Water Set Conservancy to shore up those banks or anything?
No, no. We did get some money. I don't, did we get some money? She could answer that better.
Hey there, Allison, emergency manager for the record. All of the parks are included as part of our recovery efforts from the March 2023 floods. So we are seeking reimbursement for some of these projects.
Thank you. Also, I was, what I'm looking for is your master plan for the Central Lion County. And I don't know if you guys have worked on that or because you talk about these different projects, we've got projects coming up before us later today.
May I address that?
Yeah.
Personally, I feel a master plan should come from the the people you appoint on that park board. They're the ones who should have the vision and we carry it out and we can assist them with that. And I have a question to the Josh, if we can use park tax money to help get a company and maybe to help us do a master plan. We can't even get him to go on a tour of the parks. So a lot of the members only know what parks we have. So the judge has tried since he started to take people on tours, even when you were there. No, nobody would, would go on a tour. So it's kind of hard to decide what you want in your parks when you don't go view them.
So, so with that being said, I think that we should as a commission do something to, to address this. Because we, you can't just start plugging things in because it's just, it's like building a house. You can't just start nail and board together.
Go by stuff you approved in 2004.
No, we could.
Because you got to keep up a lot of time. Back then, pickleball wasn't even created. You know, and there's new, new things that come up and people want and there's things change throughout time. And so we got to keep it up with current times.
So we, so I'd like to work toward maybe a future agenda item. Toward a master plan for the Central Lion County Parks and for the regional parks by themselves. So we'll work on that, maybe get an agenda item. Another thing I was wondering is while I could talk, when we get to those points. You were talking about water rights and stuff like that in the past. Silver Springs Mutual Water Company, I can speak because I'm a board of directors. I'm on the board of directors. I used to be the president of Silver Springs Mutual Water Company. Our policy's always been that we're not going to, we're not going to for the few people that pay on the Silver Springs Mutual Water Company, that's not the whole people, all of Silver Springs, not to put it on their back. So I wouldn't look for, you could bring it, certainly bring it before them, but I wouldn't think that that would be a I don't think you're going to get very far on that as far as getting relief. And as far as water rights, I know we're talking about a lot. They're switching over from perennial yield to conjunctive use. They're trying to do it. So I think we're going to have to infill for the future, some, some form of all, all of our county buildings and stuff like that, some extra water rights in that. So I'd certainly like to see that come forward to maybe purchase some more water rights because I think we're going to have to infill.
I did check with the school district on Silver Stage one and they said they didn't think that we would be able to use their irrigation well because he said neutral waters fighting them, trying to get that well anyway, to get the water expect that. So.
Yeah, I talked to him too. And so something else we have is we have a in our lands bill, we're trying to get that other park. So when we apply for that other park, it's outside the Silver Springs Mutual Water Company's district.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just a comment. Yeah, I'm, I'm all for and I, I think I've asked before a master plan for parks, if we have one or not. So I would certainly support an agenda item for that. The way I would like to see it work is have they go to the citizen advisory boards of Central Lion County first, get their ideas. Then it goes to the parks board for them to develop a master plan. And then it comes to the county commission for us to approve it. But that's, that's just my thoughts on that.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager. I think we're kind of maybe getting a little bit off topic on some of that. We can certainly bring an item back on a future to start discussing.
No, I, I believe that's what Commissioner Keller was, was getting at is that we do need a future agenda item to discuss this fully with you and, and figure out a good way to do that. Obviously we're losing a lot of money, equipment, facilities to vandalism. So I would also like to see something about more cameras. Make sure that we can see who's doing it and go back for restitution on these things because they're tearing stuff up. Dressler Park's been torn up. Bathrooms have been ripped up, water damage. It's just absurd that the, that this is happening, but it is something that is costing you, you and the facility department a lot of money. And so we need to address that. We've got to get this stopped.
One other point about park tax money is it's nice to put it in, but then we have to maintain it. We can't use park tax money for construction tax money to put it in. So it's got, when you do something, it's got to be something before to take care of.
Yep.
That's the question. And then I think we're all going to have some questions.
Oh, good. Commissioner Jacobson?
I just wanted to have a question. Are you back when I was on the parks board, we tried to leverage the our tax money through grants or whatever we could possibly or other leagues, like if they needed stuff, we would leverage that. So the league would put in some money and then the county could put in some money. Are you guys actively seeking any way of leveraging that? Yes.
No, I didn't know that we could do that.
Okay.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Uh, yeah, I just, we can talk about planning all we want, but the bottom line, what works is work. And it sounds like your crews got plenty on their plate and are getting around. And so appreciate it and keep on fighting the good fight without putting in for a bunch of extra personnel.
He wants more people.
I thought that was maybe where you were going.
I'd say the amount of work that you put in is phenomenal. I, I just, everything that happens in, in our park system. I, I don't know how you get it all done. Especially with the limited resources that you have. So really appreciate your crew out there getting this work done. Thank you. Okay. Any other, well, got another appointed official. There's my You go ahead, Mr. Foley.
Good morning, Josh Foley, Lion County Councilor for the record. A couple of things I want to bring to your attention on your next agenda. I'll be bringing up a a policy on investment income allocation. I looked, I know there was one, maybe 30 years ago it was adopted. I wasn't here at the time, in case you were wondering. I was an auditor because I, so I know that was around, but it's just to come to the board, formally adopt a policy of what we're actually doing so that you have that out there for for information. The, another thing that the board should be aware of is firmly, the city of firmly is moving forward with their community center. I'm not sure if that's the exact right term at this point because it encompasses a lot. Emergency response, whatever we want to call it. They're moving forward with the, the work that's on that parcel and that's right next to the firmly senior center. A few years ago, we put a fiber line between the firmly senior center and the firmly justice board. That is where their parking lot is going to be. And unfortunately, when the facilities department contracted to put that in, they only hit it one foot deep. And the parking lot needs more base than one foot. So they're going to have to either relocate or deepen or wolf on that. So we're working with city firmly on that at this time. Just a quick side note on what the county manager brought up on the fencing at the at the justice complex. We were aware before we started the project that we needed to redo the parking lots and increase the, the space, but that was not part of the bid. That was not part of that, that project. However, instead of bidding a separate project, we have a good contractor on site. We thought it would be appropriate to bring back a change order to actually do that instead of spend additional money to go through a promo, an additional process that we don't need to do. If we can save money, we'd like to save money. So and we were also looking at the cash flow. Maybe putting it off a little bit, but I think we're going to be just about timing this right to be able to cash flow that as well. On the money that's coming in. I will have, have a number of items on your agenda today regarding public defender contracts. There will be three more coming up on your next agenda as well to get all of those lined up for the upcoming year. One of those other duties is assigned. I get to, to help with. So in case you were wondering, that's all there is now. Any questions?
Questions? Talk to you later. Thank you. Any other appointed? Nobody coming up? Last call for appointed officials. Let's see anybody on Zoom. Let's move on to item seven.
Can we take a break?
Okay, request for a break. Let's go to about like five minutes. All right, we'll go to 10:15. All right, it's ten fifteen. We're gonna call, call a meeting back to order. Item eleven. Advisory board reports. Do we have any? Advisory board reports. I don't see any hands up. Anybody in here? If not, then we will move on to item twelve. Consent agenda action will be taken all items. All matters listed into consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board of county commissioners with one action. And without an extensive hearing, any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda. Discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. So today our items are twelve A through twelve J. And I've already been requested, we're gonna have some items pulled. So, uh, commissioners, any items here that you want to pull? I see Commissioner Keller hand. Go ahead.
I'd like to pull twelve E, F, and G.
Okay. So we're pulling twelve E, F, and G for discussion. Anything further? Me from the public. Okay, if that's the case, I'll look for a motion.
Approve the consent agenda fifteen, I mean twelve A through twelve D and twelve I and twelve J.
H?
Are we calling H also? He didn't want to pull.
And eight, twelve H.
Oh, you wanted to pull H?
No, no, that, uh.
J, all right, you're leaving those in. All right. So we're pulling E, F, and G.
I'll second that.
Okay. So. Have a motion for twelve A through D and H through J. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. So now we'll move on to twelve E for possible action. Approve the purchase of four message boards for Penny Silver Stage, Santa Maria and Mark Twain Parks. Out of park construction tax funds in the amount not to exceed four thousand dollars. Um, Commissioner Keller.
So these, I, I, I looked on our, uh, agenda and I really would like these kind of items not to be on the consent agenda. I would like them to be to where we can at least have a presentation and discuss a little bit about them. Uh, your, your presentation earlier covered one of those. That's why I didn't. Hold the one. Uh, so I just want to know a little bit about these, uh, message boards because vandalism is one of the big things that we have. So I wanted to know who requested it, who's asking for this and, and why?
Judge Smith, uh, district, uh, park supervisor and facility supervisor. Um, this has been requested, uh, at some of these parks because as our sports teams grow, the schedules and stuff, um, so that. The field schedules can be posted. So who has reserved the field is part of it. There is a possibility that they will be vandalized, um, but it has been requested by the different sports leagues. In order to accommodate, um, enough area for the sports leagues. Uh, for instance, the baseball field, sometimes outfield is used for soccer and stuff. So there's. Multiple things that we have to, um. Take into consideration multiple leagues in order to make it all work for what we have.
Are you send those to the leagues, the, the coaches and, and the leagues that they all get that by, from your office in the first place, right?
Um, we're working on that. As these leagues have grown, because we don't organize each. Of the, uh, the, the individual. Teams basically are leagues reserve the fields, but that doesn't always get transferred down to all the different coaches. Um, so having it posted, there have been a few issues with conflicts. And so this is kind of trying to reduce that conflict between the different sports leagues and different coaches.
Well, I would think that, uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, but. If they're posted, then Joe Public can't show up with a Saturday birthday party and just be on there. So. How else would you get information out to Joe Public if? If you don't have a reader board. So. Um, well, I, we've reserved the field for, uh, football. Well, how do you, how do I know that? I'm here with birthday party and we're gonna stay and we're gonna get on the field. So I guess I'm curious what, I guess I don't follow what you're asking, Commissioner Keller.
Well, I, to me, we've been doing it without these reports this whole time. And to me, it was like now the conflict is within the leagues themselves. And I thought they were getting the knowledge upfront in the first place. So I thought they were getting emails of when they're reserved their fields and everything else and they have it. That information already. So the only people that don't have it is the public, right? And so you're trying to cause that. I didn't realize there was a conflict within the.
Yeah, there's a conflict within the leagues. Um, as we grow, we've seen these problems have grown. Um. Like I said, the, the league will reserve the fields from this time to this time. But we don't necessarily coordinate with all the coaches or all the different teams themselves. It's just we coordinate with the leagues who has the reason, the field reserve.
Okay, well, I certainly will, uh, I'll support it, but, uh, kind of watch on that vandalism, see where, where it takes us.
Maybe you have something, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, well.
Yeah, Commissioner Jacobson.
Yeah, um. If we're worried about vandalism, we're not gonna put up anything new. We won't redo the roofs. We won't redo anything because if we're afraid of vandalism. I mean, so I don't think we can live a fear of vandalism. I think we need to try and mitigate what. What they can do and can't do and maybe work with law enforcement stepping it up. Video, but. I mean, if. We're not, we're gonna stop doing stuff because vandalism. That seemed like we're throwing up the white flag.
Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just, just a couple of quick questions. I, I fully support this. Um, but who's gonna be responsible for posting the information on the signboards and maintaining them?
We, we will as the parks board.
That, that you can do that with your four guys?
We'll figure out.
Okay.
Do we could put them up high enough on posts to minimize the.
Yeah, we'll coordinate that between them and the sports leagues. Um, because the actual schedule comes from the sports league, like I was saying, because that's who organizes which team has it one day.
Keep them up high, out of reach and grease the poles. Okay, thank you. Um, so any public comment? On twelve E, oh, yes.
Can, can we just do it, you know, with technology, the internet, wifi? And dis eliminate all that stuff. So let's just add a maintenance added. You know, we have to pay for the people that do this in the county. Can we just? Do, but not do that, but just do the internet stuff. And so they even know it's not an app. Do we have an app here in Lion County? Or, or something? That they can just post it and, and that's good enough. That's my comment. Oh, yeah, my name is Randall Green.
For the record, thank you.
Okay.
Any other public comment? Look for a motion then on twelve E.
I move. I move to approve.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll move to approve the purchase of four message boards for Penny Silver Stage. Santa Maria and Mark Twain Parks out of park construction tax funds in the amount not to exceed four thousand dollars.
Second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. One of twelve F, Commissioner Keller?
So on this one, the only comment after we got that, uh, report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I need to read that. Yep. Uh, approved purchases for soccer goals for Santa Maria Park out of park construction tax fund not to exceed sixteen thousand. Now you can.
So after the report and then, uh, the comment about not getting, uh. I was looking to see who was it requesting this and if they could help out with their, their leagues, if we could leverage. Their, their, uh, money going into this, if they're, if it's a league request. And apparently we're not looking at that. So I just wanted to make that comment. So with that, we'll just move on.
Hey, any commissioner comment, Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just got a comment on this. I'm almost. Out of a selfish reason, I'm almost willing to vote against this because I live right next to Santa Maria Park. I don't know if a lot of the kids playing soccer there, but I'll support it.
That's. Any other question? Any comments? Any public comment? All right. And we'll look for a motion on that one.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the purchase of four soccer goals. For San Maria Park out of park construction tax funds not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Twelve G for possible action, approve the purchase and installation of outdoor exercise equipment for the Mark Twain Park Trail area. To be purchased out of park construction tax funds not to exceed seventy five thousand dollars. Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, I, I wanted a little bit of a explanation of this one, uh, as far as, uh. I, this black and white thing that I got here doesn't really tell me that much about it. And, uh. Guess I just want a little presentation on it because it's a lot of money and it's going into the. Mark Twain Park, which we don't have a, a plan for. So if we're pouring a lot of concrete and where it's going and. Is it in the wrong spot? Or do we even know what the right spot is and, and, uh, who asked for this? And. I know exercise equipment, uh, you got him down at, exercise equipment down at the river. And, uh, I don't know if that gets used a lot. That's a lot of metal.
Uh, Judge Smith, uh, Parks District Supervisor. Um, yeah, so this was brought to us. Through the community looking to, um, as part of completing the trail, having some exercise equipment there as well. We looked at, uh, multiple different, uh. Types of equipment, this specific equipment that we're looking at going with, um. Is, uh, it's more, instead of being spread out around the trail, it's actually in, um, one area in the core concrete pad. There are multi-use units, so the, what we're requesting would be three different pieces of equipment. Um, each one on the X has about four different exercises you can do on it. Uh, one of the reasons, there's a couple of reasons why we went away from actually the trail structure with the extra. With the exercise equipment around it. Um, one of the reasons is we, most people don't work out that way. It's not like you really run for a hundred yards. And then trying to exercise equipment. Also with the vandalism issue, um, it puts it in one central location. So then we can outfit it with a camera and lights to kind of keep an eye on it. Um, the, uh, and then that movement that we're looking at going towards. This equipment is actually one of the biggest, uh. Equipments that are used in prison systems. So they're virtually tampered with, tampered with and vandalism.
It just seems like a, a big price tag to me for it. And, uh, I don't know how many people are really asking for it. Uh, you know, for that big of a price tag. I know a lot of, uh, exercise bikes and that I've seen that gang clothes on nowadays. So I don't know if, uh. It's a pretty big ask to me. For a park that has them, doesn't even have a plan yet.
But basically these are steel structures.
Yes.
Pull ups and.
Pull ups and stuff. Some of them do have weights and stuff, uh, but it's all closed behind. So they, they can't access the weights or anything like that. It's security kind of.
They can't access easily. Cause they'll, they'll tear it up.
They're used in prison systems. So they're, they're pretty.
Yeah, okay.
Access.
So that basically doubles the price right there.
Well, uh, this, they are offering a discounted rate to us. About twenty percent off.
Commissioner Henderson question?
Uh, yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. Going with, going with exercise equipment designed for prisons is a very good choice. Cause those guys have nothing to do but think about how to tear stuff up. So if they can't tear that up, then that's good. I, I do agree with, with Commissioner Keller that a little bit more information on these would, would be beneficial, especially when. We're talking that kind of money, you know, maybe pictures of the equipment we're gonna buy or, or something. Um, is there any plan on putting a fence around? The enclosure?
Not the, not, not at this time.
But if we end up with vandalism, then that's something we could possibly look at.
Um. I don't know if necessarily fencing that area would, um, deter the vandalism. I think that's part of the reason why. Um, going into a centralized location to where you have a camera, you can have. Lit. Um, some of the things we've already done at Mark Twain to reduce vandalism is, um, about a year ago. We approved doing fences on each side. So we could lock it. Used to be able to drive all the way around back. Um, and that actually ended up being kind of a part of spot for the high school kids and so. And there was a lot of vandalism that came from that. So making it so they can't drive around the back and then it would be set in more into the parts.
Commissioner Keller?
Does this have a roof over it or is it all metal? What's it, what's it made of? So it's like a hundred degree today. Temperature is gonna be hot.
Yeah.
So, and then the winter is gonna be cold. And is there a roof over the top of it?
No.
And then it's not.
That's something we could do is do shades.
So it's gonna get even bigger. In order to use it.
Well.
You're not gonna use it in the middle of a hundred degree weather.
Most, most people who exercise would do early morning or even.
I'm just trying to get the best thing for our buck. I mean, could this money go toward something else that? More, more kids would use, more of the, more of the people would use. I'm just not really sold on the exercise thing.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that too, because I, I was a member of the park board up in, uh, Rapid City, South Dakota. And we were sued because the equipment was so hot that somebody actually burned their skin. Even though there was a sign on it that said, in the sunshine, this is very hot. Do not get on this equipment. So. Whatever we need to do to add to that before the equipment goes in, we need to make sure that we aren't opening ourselves up for. Equipment burns. Okay? Well, that should be probably included in the overall situation. Good, good point by Commissioner Keller there. Any other comments? All right, if that's the case, then, uh, any public comment? Look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the purchase and installation of outdoor exercise equipment. For the Mark Twain Park Trail area to be purchased out of park construction tax funds, not to exceed seventy five thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, a second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. We have a nay, Commissioner Keller. So motion still passes four to one. And we have now concluded that. So we're gonna move down to the regular agenda. And we are on public hearing, finding items thirteen A to possible action to approve the request for a zoning map amendment. From D and P Real Estate Group LLC to amend the zoning map designation from the Title X District of C two. General Commercial District to the Title fifteen District of HI dash seven or dash S. Heavy industrial suburban for a three acre parcel located in the southwest corner of the intersection of Industrial Parkway. And Highway three forty one and Mount House APN zero one six dash one nine four dash zero five. PLZ dash two zero two four dash zero zero nine. Miss Ma'am?
Good morning, Chair. Commissioners Lisa Knapp, Senior Planner. We have working tech today. Uh, so the applicant is requesting a zone map amendment to change the current zoning. It says three acre parcel. And we're looking to go from C two, which is general commercial district under Title ten or equivalent to CC. Community commercial under Title fifteen to heavy industrial suburban. And I left off Title fifteen there. Sorry about that. Uh, this remains consistent with the master plan use designation of employment and the site is currently vacant. So you can see here, the property is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Industrial Parkway and Highway. So you can see here, the property is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Industrial Parkway and Highway thirty, three forty one. It's approximately twenty six hundred feet north of Highway fifty. And it's on the west side of Highway three forty one. You can see where it's blown up for more details. So, um, as I said, it's a total of three acres and the site is relatively flat, which is similar to most of the surrounding properties. Uh, you can see the industrial buildings that are already built to the north and some to the west. And there's a few residential further south. Uh, commercials across the highway as well. So the master plan designations in this area are split between employment to the west of the highway and the parcel and mixed use to the east. So as you see here, the existing parcel currently is C two or Community Commercial under Title fifteen, which is the same as the small parcel north of it and the commercial properties on the other side of the highway. Surrounding it are generally, um, the M one or, uh, yeah, is heavy industrial. That's the light pink surrounding all of it. And then you have some, uh, residential a little further out in the darker pink. Uh, what they're requesting is to turn it into the heavy industrial suburban, which is uh, fits in the neighborhood right there since it, that parcel is completely surrounded by it. So in order to, uh, approve an application such as this, we have to meet the findings and the three findings are listed below. It's generally making sure that this fits with the adopted master plan and the underlying land uses. It's not inconsistent with the adequate public facility policies contained in the master plan. And it's compatible with the actual and use planned uses around. Um, as the last slide shows, I do believe that this is compatible with the surrounding properties. It is mainly developed industrial already. And it wouldn't be, uh, out of character for the neighborhood. So with that, I believe the findings are met in this case. And during the planning commission, uh, hearing on May fourteenth, the application was approved unanimously by the planning commissioners that were present with a, to forward a recommendation approval. Staff agrees with their decision. And if you so choose, here's a possible motion you could make. And I'm available for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Questions? No input from the public? Seeing none and. Make the motion.
Um, Chairman Hockaday?
Excuse me, Chairman, it looks like you do have a, uh,
Oh, I've got a hand up?
A hand up on Zoom.
Okay. Hand up upper corner.
Hello. Um, I'm, I live close to this piece of property and I understand it should be zoned that way. At this time, is there any kind of business projected to go in there? Or is that just for the sale of the corner?
I have, you know, my.
You can answer that.
Um, we haven't received any information as to what they propose nor that there's any sale pending. It was just uh, a request to change the zoning and it's not one of our findings that we can.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. And seeing nothing further, then we will move on to a motion.
Chairman Hockaday, um, make a motion based on the aforementioned findings, I move that Lyon County Board of Commissioners approve the zoning map amendment request from D and P Real Estate Group LLC to change the zoning from C two general commercial district Title ten to heavy industrial suburban Title fifteen for three acre parcel located in the southwest corner of the intersection of Industrial Parkway and Highway three forty one and Mound House APN zero one six hyphen one nine four hyphen zero five PLZ two thousand twenty four hyphen zero zero nine.
Second.
Hey, motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Move to the library, item fourteen. For possible action, approve and accept the Dollar General Literacy Foundation grant of twenty five hundred dollars for the twenty twenty four summer reading program at the Yarrington Branch Library. Any commissioner comments on that? Questions? Public input? If not, do I have a motion on fourteen A to accept the grant?
I move that we approve and accept the Dollar General Literacy Foundation grant of twenty five hundred dollars for the twenty twenty four summer reading program at the Yarrington Branch Library.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hendrickson, a second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Fourteen B for possible action to appoint up to three members to the Library Board of Trustees with terms expiring June thirty, twenty twenty eight. We do have. I think we have two, we have positions for three, and I believe we have two here. Jan Schart and Nora Stevens. So we have any questions on this? Yes, Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you. Um, you know, we're kind of shifting gears a little bit, and this may be for Aaron. Um, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. It seemed like we just had a, um, advisory board that we postponed. Uh, there was one, I believe there's just the one opening and we had one applicant we postponed and um, I just want to make sure we're staying consistent. So in your opinion, are we, because there's three positions, we have two moving forward, or do we, did we leave this open long enough to recruit? I, I, I'm just making, I don't want to start doing some things on one thing because we've, oh, there might be somebody putting in or whatever and um, do you see any issues with moving forward on, on this and uh, just being consistent with our actions as of late regarding cab appointments?
Um, I agree with that, Aaron Lopez for the record. Um, I did work with Win Prindle, the pure rep library board director on this. And she did go out and do some advertising and, um, asked me for some referrals for some people to help. So I know that she did some active recruiting on her part too. Um, and we did help her do some, uh, posting to help her get some of these candidates. And when she did get these two, then did she put stuff? So I felt like that, those requirements would be.
Good, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Keller?
Uh, how, how's it makeup of that board as far as the the region? Are they all from different regions or districts or whatever? Are they all from anywhere?
I, I don't believe that it's specific to like if their geographical locations are at large.
Yeah.
Believe that they're mostly at large off the top of my head.
So do you know what the makeup is now? Is it all, is it mostly from the south or is it pretty much broken up?
Oh, I see what you're saying. No, I don't know specifically. We could, if you want to postpone it, we could come back with that information. Cause I believe we start in July. That's what you'd like.
I was just curious about representation from within the whole county.
Well, we still have a board open. So, you know, we're looking at two filling three slots. So we still have an opening for other area. That's our consideration. I'm just looking at getting the slots filled. Um, it'd be different if we had five for, you know, five people looking at three slots, but we're still gonna have an empty slot. I'm kind of looking at filling those to get the board going. But yes, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah. Um, on, uh, I, I agree with Commissioner Keller on countywide boards. Like, like this board and the, uh, there's a planning commission for one thing. It would be nice to know the geographical makeup of the members of the boards, of those, those boards.
I couldn't review that future for sure.
Commissioner Keller?
Is that a five man board?
Yes.
So they need someone to have a meeting.
Technically by July, yes.
Where'd you get people to fill in sometimes? So, you know, kind of hand up on, uh, it's, uh, Prindle.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, this is Win Prindle, Lyon County Library Director for the record. Um, you asked, has some questions about the Board of Trustees. We have five branches in the county, one in Dayton, Fernley, Silver Springs, uh, Yarrington and Smith Valley. And we try to recruit, um, trustees from the area that they're, that they live in so that we have, you know, people from all over the county, not just located here in Yarrington. So, um, Jan Schart lives in Smith Valley, Nora, um, Stevens lives in Yarrington. Um, the trustee from Fernley, um, just was his term up, it expires, uh, at the end of June and he did not want to continue. So I just found that out last week. So that's why there's three places available at the moment. Um, we also have a trustee, a new trustee from Dayton. So we try to spread it out. Um, so we get different perspectives from the different libraries and different parts of the county.
Thank you for the input. So there is an effort to make sure they're spread out, which is, uh, kind of answers that question.
Commissioner Hockaday, I'll make a motion, uh, to appoint up to three members or to appoint, uh, Jan Schart and Nora Stevens to the Lyon County, uh, Library Board of Trustees with terms expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty eight.
Second.
All right. So motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. You have your two new members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fifteen advisory board for possible action, appoint up to one member to the Stagecoach Advisory Board with a term expiring December thirty first, two thousand twenty four. And we have Timothy Frank and Sarah White. So Stagecoach. Any commissioner comments on that? Any public input?
I
Oh.
I was just looking on that thing to see if one of them was here online or if they wanted to talk.
Nope.
I don't see him.
Didn't see anybody online.
No.
Uh, okay. Anything further on that? No commissioner or any other public input? Um, we have two applicants. And if someone wants to make a motion on that, I'll be waiting here.
I move that we appoint Timothy Frank to the Stagecoach Advisory Board with a term expiring December thirty first, two thousand twenty four.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Congratulations to Timothy Frank. And we'll move on to utilities. Thank you, Ms. Lopez. For possible action sixteen A to award a contract to Cruz Construction, the amount not to exceed one million, six hundred ninety two thousand, six hundred twenty three dollars and sixty four cents for the Smoky Hills Water Main Replacement Project in Dayton and to authorize the Utilities Director to sign project related documents. Uh, Mr.
Morning Commissioners, David Rickett for the record. So, um, this is the water line that sustained catastrophic failures back in twenty and twenty one, two, two different times. So, uh, we're, we've moved this along obviously to replace this line. It is in the River Park area in Dayton in front of the middle school off of Wheeler Way. Uh, the pipeline, uh, that we're proposing to replace is, uh, just under a mile long. And it runs in front of the school, turns north, um, and continues to, um, Pine Nut Road. And it's a current fourteen inch line. We're proposing to replace it with a sixteen inch line. So we put the biz out for this project. The engineer's estimate for this project was, uh, just a little slightly over one point eight million dollars. Um, we got seven, uh, proposals on this project. Um, Cruz Construction was the lowest at the, uh, just under one point seven million dollars. And the highest is a little over two point four million dollars. So without our recommendations that we, uh, Manhart did the analysis, you know, looking at responsive and responsible bidders. Their recommendations are engineers that we awarded to Cruz Construction, you know, in the amount of this. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions, Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you. This, um, since my short three years on the board, three plus years, first time I think we've used Cruz, is that correct?
Uh, yeah.
Is it?
Correct.
Um, so, uh, when they those seven, um, we had seven responsible bidders and they all checked out or right? Uh, we have a safety net built in.
We, we do, and we do have contingency if needed in the project, but you know, under the protocols, and we went through this once before, it's the lowest responsibility responsible bidder. And Cruz was net those criteria.
Well, I, uh, that's good to get feelings out on different construction companies too. So I think, yeah, that's good.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I was gonna, gonna ask how much of the contin, how much of the contingency is in this?
Um, it's in here.
Ten percent?
Um, so, uh, the force accounts two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars.
So not ten percent, okay.
Anything further? Any public input? All right. Seeing none. I'll look for a motion on sixteen A.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion to award a contract to Cruz Construction, uh, in an amount not to exceed one million, six hundred ninety two thousand, six hundred twenty three dollars and sixty four cents for the Smoky Hills Water Main Replacement Project in Dayton and to authorize the Utilities Director to sign project related documents.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Move on to sixteen B for possible action, approve a contract with Loomis and Associates for the amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars for construction administration, construction surveying and materials testing for the Smoky Hills Water Main Replacement Project.
Thank you, Commissioner Hockaday. Um, this is the follow on to this project. This is for, uh, engineering services associated with construction administration, construction surveying and materials testing that'll be needed as part of this project.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner.
I was just, when I read this and was going through it, did we put the cart in front of the horse on, it should sixteen B be sixteen, uh, this is small potato, but it just seemed like.
Well, the, the first would be to award the, the contract and that was sixteen A. And then this one gives the construction services during construction. So if it didn't get awarded, we, we would hold on.
Okay, I just, I, I read that as some planning and whatnot. So.
Yeah. So this is actually the construction administration, the overseeing it during the construction aspect. Um, then the surveying, all that's required as part of the project and, uh, materials testing, all the testing of the geo.
Uh, so I guess where I was going is if we can't after passing sixteen A, there's really no way we cannot pass sixteen B.
Well, well, I mean, these are services that are essential. We would need to do that, uh, for this project. So.
Right.
I mean, if, 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 yeah. We, we need these services.
Okay. I was like, I was like, all right.
I just, you, you don't want to do it in house?
Well, we want to save a hundred and twenty nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. So we're gonna vote no on this one.
I think this is very competitive.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. So, oh, do we do public participation?
Public input. And seeing none and, uh, go ahead.
Uh, Chairman, uh, Hockaday, I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Loomis and Associates for an amount not to see, exceed one hundred twenty nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars for construction administration, construction surveying and materials testing for the Smoky Hills Water Main Replacement Project.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jacobson made the motion and Commissioner Hendricks seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Uh, seventeen facilities for discussion and possible action on seventeen A. Discussion. Discussion approval of the proposed cemetery rules and regulations for all Lion County cemeteries. This was brought back from some suggested improvements and corrections. We had a chance to read through them. Any Commissioner input?
I just want to thank them, Chairman Hockaday, for changing that or waiving the fee for kids sixteen and under. That's, I, I really liked that. So thank you very much, Mr. Homestead.
Uh, Mr. Homestead, anything further on that?
No, I just here to answer some questions. I changed the thing about where we decide what's unsightly, you know.
Right.
It's just some of the county, the city, the county clerk would like to have one set of rules to hand out, sort of, they covered all the cemeteries. Using to hand out three or four different.
Right. Appreciate that.
Good, unless you want something else changed, because I had it on there for discussion too, so we can change if there is something you want to change.
Yep, looks, looks good to me. Appreciate the updates on that. Uh, any public input on that? Seeing none, then I will look for a motion for seventeen A.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the proposed cemetery rules and regulations for all Lion County cemeteries as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Seventeen B for possible action, accept the donation of a soldier statue for the Smith Valley Cemetery from Mark Jones. Everybody has a chance to see the picture that was sent in our packet. Any Commissioner comments? Public comments?
Uh, yeah, Chairman Hockaday, uh, this is a nice gesture. I'm just curious, um, did the Smith Valley Cemetery Board, they approved, they approved this?
Well, and, and Commissioner, or I should say, County Manager and I had a discussion about this, you know, we approve all the donations. They were accepting it at the time of the meeting, but there was no vote required by them. In other words, it was, if they objected, then they would object during our meeting here when we're accepting it. So it kind of moves to us to do the job of accepting the donations. However, I was at the meeting and they were all very pleased with the donation. I do know that they were happy with it.
Right on.
Okay.
Aaron, that's for the record, I have a quick statement on that. Um, they did meet last night. I did ask them to re-agendize the meeting to see if they could get a letter of transmittal in for you this morning. Um, I have not received anything to date, so I made the effort to try to include them or to postpone it to, if they needed a little bit more time and they chose to move forward with today's date, so just to let you know.
And, and as I said, I was at the meeting when this was brought up and everybody was happy and approved, everything. It just was part of their public input and there was no agenda item. So we are the determining force on accepting donations. So here we are. Um, any other public input then with Commissioner input? Let's go ahead and look at a motion to accept on this if you want to. Sure sounds ready. I will certainly do it. I'll make a motion to accept the donation of a soldier statue for the Smith Valley Cemetery from Mark Jones.
Second.
Okay. Uh, a motion by Commissioner Hockday and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Seventeen C for possible action, approve the use of park construction tax funds not to exceed fifty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the installation of court poles, nets, backboards, and the painting and striping of one-half court basketball, one tennis court and two pickleball courts at Dressler Park, and to authorize the Facilities Director to sign the contract. Uh, okay, Mr. Homestead, any input on you?
Not unless you have any questions.
Any questions on that?
Just a, yes. Just, just a comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just, um, shocked to see that there was this much money, the Smith Valley Park Fund.
It's gonna drain it down quite a bit, but I'm glad they decided to use the money so we can finish this project, so we'll be done with it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, and with that three-year limit on spending it, you know, you start looking, you're, you're kind of up against a problem here. So, um, and it's been a year that it's sitting vacant, so I'm glad to see we're gonna get it done. Um, and I'm sure that we'll have the same comment here from the board. I will make the motion here to approve the use of park construction tax funds not to exceed fifty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the installation of court poles, nets, backboards and painting and striping of one-half court basketball, one tennis court and two pickleball courts at Dressler Park, and to authorize the Facility Director to sign the contract.
I'll, I'll second that, but you asked for public comment?
Um, yes, I did, didn't I?
I, I don't believe we did.
I didn't? Well, then I will now. Any public comment? I got a lot of them. I had a lot of people calling saying they wanted to come in and support it. I said I would certainly take care of that if needed. So no public comment. A motion was made by myself and seconded by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We'll get that court done. Moving on to eighteen A for possible action, accept a grant award from the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services Division of Child and Family Services for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five in the amount of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars with no county match required to provide child abuse and neglect prevention services to families in Lion County. So, Ms. Holmes. Dr. Holmes.
Good morning. Dr. Sheila Holmes, for the record. Uh, this is a new grant opportunity, except for it is for a limited time only. Uh, it is using some remaining ARPA funds from the Division of Child and Family Services, and our goal for these remaining funds that have been offered to us is to get our clinical staff trained in trauma-focused cognitive behavioral health therapy. It's a very specific modality to aid families um, that have a trauma background and to help them get to uh, a more sustainable flourishing state of life. And so we're really excited to be able to potentially offer this training to all of our clinical staff working with Lion County Human Services through this grant.
Thank you. Any Commissioner questions or comments? Public input? If not, I'll look for a motion on eighteen A.
I move that we accept a grant award from the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services Division of Child and Family Services for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five in the amount of twenty, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars with no county match required to provide child abuse and neglect prevention services to families in Lion County.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Doctor. Move on to nineteen A.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, I will read this and then we'll talk to Mr. Foley. Uh, for possible action, approve a collective bargaining agreement with the Lion County Employees Association effective July first, two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, two-year contract. Yes, sir.
Josh Foley, Lion County Controller, for the record. Uh, this is a two-year agreement between Lion County and the Lion County Employees Association. It does include a five percent across the board salary increase the first year, a three percent across the board salary increase the second year. In addition, as we, as we did a salary survey and, and discussed that salary survey with the Employees Association, uh, bargaining team, we found that we had a few positions that were underpaid compared to the last three counties or their jobs and moving them from the pay grade that they were in to the next pay grade up was, in most cases, it was a twenty-five percent differential, and that wasn't the amount that they were being paid out of class. They were being, shouldn't say out of class, they were being paid, underpaid around ten to twelve percent um, for most of those positions. So we took the A, A two, A three, A four for the pay grades, left A two as was, and took A three, renamed it A four, took A four, renamed it A five, same pay, but just changed the terminology and created a new A two pay grade that's between the current A two and A three. There's a twenty-five percent difference between those two currently. This contract will create a new one that has a ten percent differential from A two and fifteen percent from A three. And then with that, let me add, we also added, we have a M one and M two pay grade. We added an M three pay grade. With that being said, we moved a handful of positions from those, uh, from the A two pay grade into the new A three pay grade, and from that M two pay grade into the M three pay grade, into the M three pay grade. So we could put those, those salaries in market salaries. Those are covered in your next agenda item. We'll talk about those, those names or names of the positions. We also, in addition to that, negotiated that the dependent care coverage, which was in contract of thirty percent, be changed to a cap of fifty percent. We increased these safety footwear, we commonly refer to as a boot allowance, from two hundred and fifty dollars per year to three hundred and fifty dollars per year. And then the sickly buyout upon retirement, it's tiered for ten years, fifteen years, twenty years and twenty-five years. We will pay, after the first two hundred and forty hours are taken off the table, we will pay their hourly rate of pay times the remaining hours, but there's a cap on how much we will pay. So it's six thousand dollars at ten years. That's, I think it's six thousand and ten. I should make sure that I do that correctly. It's five thousand at ten years. It goes up to seven thousand. At fifteen years, it's six thousand, it's gonna go up to eight thousand in the contract. Twenty years is a seven thousand, goes up to nine thousand. Twenty-five years, the cap is currently eight thousand, it will go up to ten thousand. We added Juneteenth as a holiday, official recognized holiday in the collective bargaining agreement to match state law. And those are the changes, the total cumulative estimated cost for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five is seventy million, seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and two dollars, which is budgeted for next year. And for fiscal year twenty-six, seventeen thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollar, nine hundred, nine, five hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. I am open to any questions.
Any questions, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Not really a question, just a couple of comments. One, we have the best county staff in the state, um, and I appreciate you doing all the hard work you get to make sure that we compensate them fairly. So I appreciate that. I know that's a lot of work, but thank you and good job well done.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay. Any public input? Seeing none, we'll move on with the, uh, motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a collective bargaining agreement with the Lion County Employees Association effective July one, two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Keller. Okay, motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right, we'll move on to nineteen B for possible action, approve a memorandum of understanding between Lion County and the Lion County Employees Association for salary range reclassification, reallocation for certain positions. Mr. Foley?
Josh Foley, Lion County Controller, for the record. So with the new pay ranges being put into place, the current policy is, is we just adjust the pay ranges and employee, if they are not in the new pay range, they come up to the minimum. In this particular case, part of the negotiation with the association, and this is part and parcel of the negotiation for the contract that was just approved on the previous agenda item, would be to take those employees that are currently in the job positions of the building and grounds maintenance worker, and that's not the senior maintenance worker, that's just the building and ground maintenance worker, control room operator, those two would go from A two to the new A three pay grade uh, with a ten percent salary increase on top of the five percent salary range increase. And then the wastewater treatment superintendent and water superintendent uh, would be moved from the M two pay grade to the M three pay grade, again with a ten percent pay increase, actually increase their salaries plus the five percent that's, that's there. So that's what this memorandum of understanding does. So I'm open to any questions on that.
Questions? Public input? Seeing none. Move for a motion on nineteen B.
I move that we approve a memorandum of understanding between Lion County and the Lion County Employees Association for salary range reclassify, reclassification, reallocation for certain positions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
And just a side note, that is association only. There are other positions that are that should, are recommended or will be recommended to be moved now that you've created the new pay grades that are non-association eligible positions, and so that will come to you at your next agenda meeting, uh, such as District Court Clerk, Justice Court Clerk, one, District Court Clerk and Justice Court Clerk ones, but just FYI, there, there's more to come as we get the salary sorted.
Okay, we'll go to nineteen C for possible action, approve the debt management policy and capital improvement plan for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five.
Josh Foley, Lion County Controller, for the record, in case you forgot who I was.
Yeah.
Uh, we're required by state law to do an annual debt management policy and capital improvement plan. The debt management policy is only if you have outstanding debt, which we do. Currently, the outstanding debt that we have is for the Dayton, um, the Dayton Sewer Fund. The water fund has no debt and the, the general governmental funds, we currently are not having that service on either. And then there's a five-year capital improvement plan that has to be part of the debt management policy and statute as well. I put all of that information together, uh, for your agenda packet for you to review. And I'm here to answer any questions or, uh, take care of any comments.
Any questions on the packet that you were given? Any public comment? Pretty easy today for you, sir. Um, coming up. So, uh, no comments, then we'll go on to a motion for nineteen C.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the debt manage, management policy and capital improvement plan for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five.
Correct. Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Um, item number nineteen D for possible action, approve a three-month contract beginning July first, two thousand twenty-four with Walther Law Offices, P L L C, for public defender services in a monthly amount of forty thousand dollars.
Josh Foley, Lion County Controller, again, uh, for the record. So Walther Law Offices currently takes care of all of our public defender work in all of the counties. They came to us a few months ago and said, we would like not to do that. We'd like to scale back what we're doing and have you go back to what you did prior to that one contract, where we had three different primary public defender firms, one that was a primary firm to cover uh, Walker River, one for Dayton and one for Fernley. And in addition to that, they also asked, requested if we could, based on talking to the attorneys that are doing the work, if we could split the juvenile contract out from that, because it's becoming uh, a little more complicated with that now that we've added a, an additional a court master position at the county, so you have actually another judge sitting and doing schedules for that, where previously it was taking care of ways of the justice of the peace of the district court at that point as additional work. So with that being said, they no longer want to walk over any of those contracts that was a juvenile contract. However, when we did the RFQ and put it out there for the Walker River contract, and all three contracts are, uh, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which we were requiring three attorneys and two support staff working with Department of Management of Defense for the base loads. Uh, we didn't get a single response to our RFQ. I did reach out personally to a number of attorneys and had discussions. They were not interested in it. So Walther Law Firm said, you know what? Let's, let's do a contract just for Walker River. Let's, let's do a contract just for Walker River, will take care of Walker River contract for three months. While you're still looking to see if you can find other attorneys, because they didn't want to do it for any longer. Hopefully we can find someone within that time period, but that's what this contract does is takes care of the Walker River Justice Court. Contract for the next, well, from July through September thirty.
Just for juveniles?
This is the whole, this is the adults. The juvenile will be a separate contract, which will be coming on the next.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you Chairman Hockiday. So. If we can't find somebody at the end of three month, does pool pack help? Find people have connect, I mean now, so what happens if we don't find anybody?
Then, so we. I'm working on that. I don't have a great answer for you. We need attorneys for public defense, we have to figure out how to do it. One option would be to hire internally for that contract and create an internal public defenders office. Which is not as easy as it sounds, you need vehicles, you need space, you need all sorts of stuff. And we currently haven't been able to fill vacant positions at the District Attorney's Office for. A significant amount of time, even though our pay range is the highest in the class we can explore that. So it's a problem, they're just starting up attorneys out there that are interested in doing the work, public defense work, and so. We will do our best to come up with an answer. I don't have all the answers at this point in the war.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair. Was, would the State Indigent Defense Commission help in attorney searches?
They, we actually did the RFQ and had them advertise it and send it out to the people that they were aware of. They did talk about, we could use the state public defenders office for that, unfortunately. That has been less than reliable in the past and we're, we would prefer not to have that as our choice. I know Carson City ran into issues when they were using them because they were notified. That they were short staffing as well and couldn't cover all the cases that they needed to cover. So doing the best we can, I don't have great answers, wish I had better answers right now. We do have everything lined up except for this one contract and this one contract, we have a bandage version.
Yeah, just, just two, two comments on that, if I may, one. I agree, just, we do not want to go down the state public defender route. That has historically not been well performing in the state of Nevada. Number two, you know, I'm, I'm really fond of bringing everything back in-house that we can, not this. This we do not need in-house. So good luck finding somebody.
Commissioner Jacobson?
I guess. A concern of mine would be. We can't fill this position, then do we in-house start? Selecting some of these things that we just, because we can't provide a public defender, we just throw out or.
So we do have additional options that are out there, I'd prefer not to get too deep into this in a public meeting. We are doing internal evaluations, we do have conflict attorneys that are set up, if we can't get the primary attorney. We have other ones that come in and do work, we have some band breads. I do want to publicly thank the firms that are willing to, to put in and do this work for us because really appreciate. Especially in this case Walter Law Firm for separating up and for saying, you know what, we'd rather have. Vacation time and fantasy time occasionally, and we don't want to screw the entire county, but we're willing to help out in the pinch as they are.
Anything further? Public comment? All right.
Chairman Hockiday, I'll make a motion to approve a three-month contract beginning July first, two thousand twenty four with Walter Law. Offices P L L C for the public defender services in a monthly amount of forty thousand dollars.
Any second on that?
Second.
Motion on Commissioner Jacobson, a motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Keller, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Runs nineteen E. For possible action, approve a revised contract with Walter, Walter Law Offices, P L L C. For public defender services in the Fernley Municipal Court, changing the end date of the contract from June thirty, twenty twenty five to June thirty, twenty twenty four.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Controller for the record, so for them to. Cease doing some of the work in the other parts of the county, we have to change the existing contract that goes through two thousand twenty five. And make it in June thirty, two thousand twenty four. In two agenda items, you will have the replacement contract for this with the firm that's. With the attorneys with a different firm that are currently providing the work in Fernley Municipal Court. But it'll just be changing it to their name so that they have it.
Any questions? Public input? Motion?
Chairman Hockiday, I'll make a motion to approve a revised contract with Walter Law Services, P L L C. For the public defender services in the Fernley Municipal Court, changing the end date of the contract. From June thirtieth, two thousand twenty five to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Henderson, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Moving on to nineteen F for possible action, approve a three-year agreement starting July first, twenty twenty four with Mansfield and Mayo. P L L C to serve as one of Lyon County's primary public defenders with primary responsibility in this canal township. In the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Controller, this contract would take care of the Fernley Justice Court contract. They also would provide conflict counsel for Dayton and. And Walker River Justice Courts when the primary public defender for those courts has to conflict out for various reasons, which could be. They have a conflict because they have a different person they've represented in the past and they can't represent. The clients or for workload standards, those stuff.
Question, yes?
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair, so. Is this an increasing in annual cost?
Uh, there is a, so when we take a look at the contracts, and this is. This is unprecedented, we haven't gone from a one firm to three firm in the past, but. Approximately what you're looking at is an increase of about three percent. Over what, three to four percent over what we're currently paying was budgeted for, however. We also added in because they're providing that conflict council, and we have three firms instead of one, we're able to actually. Get more for that, so we decrease what we're paying for conflict council and put it into the contracts. Don't know exactly where that's going to play out, we do have in theory a whole harmless from. Department of Vintage and Defense Services where they cover anything over, it's nine hundred thousand and change for our public defender system. So the increase is really being covered by the state because they've been held. Liable in a, a court action that they're responsible for public defense. And that, that has been defined somewhat by the legislature, as the county is still going to provide what they've been providing. But it gets indexed each, up each year and the state will provide over and above that.
Any further questions? Any public input? Right, move on to a motion for nineteen F.
Mister Chair, I move that we approve a three-year agreement starting July one, twenty twenty four. With Mansfield and Mayo, P L L C to serve as one of Lyon County's primary public defenders. With primary responsibility in the canal township in the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Jacobson, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Nineteen G for possible.
So just a side note, that takes care of Walker River contract. Fernley contract and Fernley Municipal Court contract. Or will with this next one, Dayton will be on your next agenda and juvenile probation will be on your next agenda. And there's also a conflict council agreement that needs to be revised, it'll be on the agenda.
Nineteen G for possible action, approve a one-year agreement starting July first, twenty twenty four with Mansfield and Mayo, P L L C. To serve as the prime, primary public defenders in the Fernley Municipal Court in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Controller for the record, again, we just terminated or changed the agreement. So Walter Law Offices is no longer doing that effective after June thirtieth. And this is the new provision, just want to. Put in the record that this is a hundred percent reimbursed from the city of Fernley to Lyon County Public Services. By statute, we have to provide public defender services and by statute, they have to reimburse us for the costs. Anyways, I don't agree with the statute, but I had a reason.
Any questions on this item? Any public input on this item? I'll look for a motion on.
Chairman Hockiday, I'll make a motion to approve a one-year agreement starting July first, two thousand twenty four with Mansfield Mayo, P L L C. To serve as the primary public defenders in the Fernley Municipal Court in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Henderson, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Move on to the last item here for you, nineteen H for possible action, approve the First Amendment to the Indigent Defense Conflict Council Agreement. With Silver State Law.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Controller for the record, so currently until June thirtieth, the. Walter Law Offices is the primary public defender for all of the public defense in Lyon County. Silver State Law, we appreciate what they've done for us and continue to do for us. Had the contract that states when Mansfield or when Walter Law Offices has to conflict out of a case. We want you to be our first line of. Of conflict council, so we're going to give you the first right of refusal for these cases, but based on that, you're going to. Guarantee you're going to take a certain number of cases before we have to go to other conflict council. And they've been taking some of the more complex cases, ones we really appreciate for taking, I wouldn't want to be in the middle of those. I have a hard time with jury selection, sitting there listening to allegations of what's going to be going on in the case. Anyways, this is just modifying the agreement, so instead of Walter Law Offices conflicting out. It recognizes the new structure that we're going to have three public defender firms for the justice courts. Plus the, the juvenile probation conflict, and then they get the next bite of the apple after those, so that it. It doesn't have outdated language in, and so that's what the amendment is.
Okay, any questions? Public input? If not, we'll get a motion on this item.
Move that we approve the First Amendment to the Indigent Conflict Council Agreement with Silver State Law.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Keller, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, thank you, Mister Foley. Okay, we're going to move on to emergency management, twenty A for possible action, accept a state emergency response commission. Local emergency FY twenty five, S E R C Operations Planning, Training and Equipment Grant Award. Number twenty five dash S E R C dash eleven dash zero one. Approved in the amount of thirty thousand for equipment and four thousand for operations and to authorize the emergency manager to sign in grant. To sign the grant award.
Thank you, Mister Chair, Taylor Allison, Lyon County Emergency Manager for the record. This is the first of two grand awards, the local emergency planning committee approved my office. Applied for through the Nevada State Emergency Response Commission. This grant will provide hazardous materials, deep front equipment to Central Lion. That will be deployable across the county as part of their fulfillment of the quad county hazard.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for your work on applying for the stance here. Any public input? Motion on item twenty eight.
Look up the state in emergency response commission, local emergency. Fiscal year twenty five, S E R C Operation Planning, Training and Equipment Grant, Award Number twenty five, S E R C. Eleven oh one was approved in the amount of thirty thousand for equipment and four thousand for operations. And to authorize the emergency manager to sign the grant award.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Hendricks, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. County manager is up. For possible action to discuss and provide direction to the county manager in regards to developing a bill draft resolution, BDR for the twenty twenty five legis. Legislature, which may include discussion on possible. Topics for BDR, direction of staff to research and come back with information related to possible BDR and input from the public on possible topics for BDR. The board may direct staff to prepare a resolution and bring back to the board for further consideration or ongoing item here, sir, you're up.
All right, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record, so this is our standing item. Last time we did discuss a little bit. The possibility of seeing if NACO would want to take up one or more of the suggestions that we have, and so. I would ask the board at this time, I'm going to have to do that because I think they're currently working on all that. So I'd like to, if, if we are going to suggest to NACO. The potential BDR. To get that figured out. Now, it sounds like they are going to take up. According to Commissioner Hendricks, some of the solar stuff, so. I know that's been a request a couple of times. That I'm happy to. Hear, hear other ideas and.
To press on the third. Press on with what, Commissioner Jacobson?
Just to, just to comment on my concerns with solar. A few weeks ago, as I may have mentioned, visited Tesla and they put the solar panels on top of their building. You don't see many on the land around it, why? Because the land is so valuable. So why do they want? They, it tells me that. Big companies like that. Have devalued our public lands and have put a huge price tag on their own property that they own. And I struggle with that. Those are my comments, thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Just a, a question, actually, because now that we're talking about solar, it makes me think, do we have? The authority to put in our county code, a requirement that buildings over certain size have solar on the roof?
Andrew Haskin for the record, yeah, that's certainly something that we could put in our, our design standards if the board chooses.
So we wouldn't need a BDR for that, we already have that authority?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything further?
And I think with, with Commissioner Henderson just said. These companies that want to put them in, the. Rooftops and they maybe work together on getting them in, so it doesn't necessarily maybe. Increase the costs or whatever for the warehouse or whatever they're putting in on top, but I, I, I do like. That and I hadn't thought of that.
Well, may if, if we're going to go that direction, it'd be all renewables. Right, so if there's good wind area instead of solar, they could put wind or whatever, if we're going to go that direction. I did want to make a comment that we will be meeting, NACO will be meeting for tomorrow. So if we want something, then bring it forward to them.
Thank you again, Mister Chair, then back to the, the question I asked you at last meeting. Does staff bring anything forward? Is there an arrest they're having problems with that, that we need to address?
We have had that discussion, we talked about it in leadership last time, I haven't received anything other than what the emergency manager brought forward. And Mister Foley has one, I think, to bring up today. Uh now's the time.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Controller for the record. So there's a statute in N R S three fifty four that. Basically talks about when you're in violation of overexpending your budget. And the way the statute reads is if you receive federal grant money and you've spent the federal grant money, you haven't over expended your budget. Uh does not refer to state grants, does not refer to other donations or local grants. And my proposal would be that we just reword that saying if you receive federal grants, state grants. Uh local grants or donations. That the comptroller or fiscal agent would have the ability to automatically augment the budget on the revenue expenditure side to reflect those grants that were spent during. That fiscal year. And it's just a housekeeping thing, but it would be much simpler instead of. Many places where you go and you augment a budget, if you have a tax rate in the fund, you're required to advertise in a newspaper. Um to augment the budget if it has a tax rate. And so there are costs associated with with augmenting the budgets. Where this could be an automatic augmentation would be fairly straightforward.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Chair. If you could summarize that for me. And get it to me today, I will bring that up at the Naco meeting tomorrow because that's something new. I'm sure if that's all local governments.
Yes.
So yeah, that that might be something they could be interested in it, but if not, I mean, Naco only has five B D Rs. That certainly. Sounds like something that would be beneficial.
I can drop that language and give it to you.
Appreciate it.
Anything further?
Yeah, can you share that with me too? I'll be at the same committee meeting.
Just make a couple of copies.
So I should follow.
Just do lots of copies. Okay, um so we'll continue the item on. Agenda uh sounds like we're on, you know, good progress here, coming up with some ideas that are necessary.
And I think at the next meeting, I'll provide you um. This backup of comprehensive list of what we've come up with so far. Um so that. We can start to kind of get a feel for which direction the board wants to move in. We do have to have the B D R submitted by September first.
September first, right?
Yeah, so.
And. Yeah, it would be good to do that the next time. So if there's anything there, also, we might can take to Naco because they have the same deadline that we do. So but their board has to prove it at their August meeting, so it's going to be approved anyway. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sooner the better.
And and we're going to have to start drafting this in my good on.
Right?
Yep.
Any public input? If not. Just uh. Going to continue moving on with the uh item.
What?
Item twenty one B for possible action, approve master services agreement amendment to phase number one in the amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars in phase two. And the amount of thirty six thousand dollars for technical support for development of a conceptual county lands bill and on public lands and natural resource support with resource concepts. Incorporated R C I. Right?
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So this is not a change to the overall um contract that we had with R C I that is getting ready to expire here at the end of this month. Um this is more just to kind of clean up some of the language and the task orders. So we had changed some things um. R C I has prepared some several letters um regarding solar projects and other public lands issues that we hadn't accounted for when we originally did. Um this master services agreement. So this is just to really kind of wrap all the paperwork up and. Make sure that uh it accurately reflects the work that was done.
Anything, Commissioner Henderson?
Our contract with R C I is expiring at the end of this month. Are we going to enter into a new one with them?
It is on my desk at the moment.
Because they are valuable.
Actually, it'll be a totally separate master services agreement.
Yeah, but they are, they are valuable.
Anything further on that?
And and just to clarify, that was budgeted in its under the amount that I can sign, so the board probably won't see that.
Okay, any public input? Seeing none. Move on with twenty one B. Do I have a motion to approve the master services agreement amendment one?
Mister Chair, I move that we approve. Master Services Agreement Amendment to Phase One in the amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars and Phase Number Two. And the amount of thirty six thousand dollars for technical support for development of conceptual county lands bill and on public lands and natural resources support. With Resource Concepts Incorporated.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Keller, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Twenty one C, moving right along here for possible action, approve amended task order D between Lyon County, Nevada and Armstrong Consultants Incorporated. Providing professional engineering services for Silver Springs Airport for a partial parallel taxiway design. In the amount of thirty two thousand forty dollars and to authorize the county manager to sign.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. Um yeah, so the board had previously approved task order D, I think it was at the last meeting um. However, when we submitted it to FAA um along with all the other grant paperwork, they come back and requested some changes. And because it was board approved, it has to be board approved again. So uh it was pretty minor um that I think it's. It had to do with the overall cost and.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah.
Chairman, uh and there's. It's, if I remember from the last meeting correctly, these monies should be reimbursed, correct? But the.
This will.
Some of them.
Yeah, this will be paid for out of the out of the grant.
Okay, yeah.
And if we don't get the grant, we don't do it.
Okay, any further commissioners? Any public input? If not. Then I'll take a motion on twenty one C.
A move that we approve the amended task order D between Lyon County, Nevada and Armstrong Consultants Incorporated. Providing for professional engineering services for the Silver Springs Airport for a partial parallel taxiway design in the amount of thirty two thousand forty dollars. And to authorize the county manager to sign.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hendricks, second by Commissioner Henderson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Twenty one D for possible action, approve and authorize the county manager to sign and submit an airport improvement program A I P. Grant application to the Federal Aviation Administration. The application is for fifty three thousand four hundred thirty dollars with a three thousand three hundred forty dollar county match. For the design of the airfield lighting upgrade.
Interpass inline county manager. So FAA is one of the. I think they may even be the only agency that requires the board's approval to even submit the grant. So um and we we do this every year. Usually I do it in January, February. I missed this one um when we when we did it and luckily we caught it before it was submitted and we've had some time. So that's what this is, just for the grants application.
Commissioner questions? Public input? Seeing none, then I'll go for a motion on twenty one B.
Mister Chair, I move that we approve and authorize the county manager to sign and submit. An airport improvement program A I P grant application to the Federal Aviation Administration. The application is for fifty three thousand four hundred and thirty dollars with a three thousand three hundred and forty dollar county match. For the design of the airfield lighting upgrade.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes five zero. Twenty one E for possible action, approve change order number one between Lyon County, Nevada and American Road Maintenance. For additional crack ceiling. Material for the Silver Springs Airport in the amount of forty four thousand dollars.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So this is last year's airport uh um grant that we did um for the paint, the maintenance preservation at the. The, excuse me, the pavement preservation um project for. The Silver Springs Airport. Um so they're essentially doing white crack ceiling. Um however, some of the cracks were wider, some of them were deeper than anticipated. And so there's an extra cost there for materials now and um. In theory, we will get reimbursed from this out of the um grant. Well, what will happen is at the end of the grant, there'll be a. An amendment submitted and then FAA will reimburse us for that. However, um because that's not a guarantee, I have to put it on the agenda as such. And so if that doesn't happen, this will be paid for out of the capital. Budget.
Any question?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is this on the, on the main uh? Thing or is it taxiways?
I believe this is taxi.
Yeah, okay.
Anything further? Public input? Okay, well, in that case, we'll take a motion on this one.
A move that we approve change order number one between Lyon County, Nevada and American Road Maintenance for additional crack ceiling material for the Silver Springs Airport. In the amount of forty four thousand dollars.
Second.
Who who second? Okay. Uh we have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Jacobson, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes five zero recess to convene as. Recession convene as Willow Creek General Improvement District Board um. Public participation will actually be taken on the item until it's properly agendas and this can be public. Participation for the uh Willow Creek General Improvement District. You have. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation or has to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. Board will conduct public comment after discussion of each action item. Okay, item twenty three, Willow Creek General Improvement District, regular agenda here for possible action. Prove the debt management policy and capital improvement plan for two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five, Mister Foley.
Josh Foley, Lyon County Controller for the record, the. Uh Willow Creek General Improvement District has two similar bonds through USDA. Since they have debt, we have to adopt the every year debt management policy capital improvement plan. So I've prepared that and put it in the packet for your consideration. I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions? Nope, public input. None seen. Motion please on twenty three A.
Mister Chair, I move that we approve the debt management policy and capital improvement plan for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Hendricks, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Uh public participation for conclusion of the Willow Creek General Improvement District. Do we have any public participation? Seeing none, then I will move on to adjourn and reconvene as the Lyon County Board of Commissioners uh action item twenty five. Gender request, Mr. Jacobson, anything?
Um. No.
Okay. Think about it. Mr. Keller.
Yeah, I'd like to see something on the agenda as far as uh master plan on our uh. Park system in Central Lyon County.
Commissioner Henderson?
Um. I'd I'd like to, actually, I'd like to ask the question of Commissioner Keller, if I could, does that regional request include use of the parks money, the park fund? Sure, it's a policy on that. Thank you. But no, I I don't have any at this time.
Commissioner Hendricks?
No.
And none for me. Um final commissioner comments, Commissioner Hendricks.
No, this side.
Commissioner Henderson?
Hungary.
Okay, we're getting there. But Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, when uh. When we get reports like an extensive report like we got from uh the parks, can we get a copy of that so that I can at least follow? And then half of what he said, I mean. Kind of remember, kind of not. So I'd like to have that written. And when people come. And say, a lot of people or some people, I'd like to know how many people exactly. Because it says that this was brought before by a bunch of people. I want to know if that was just two people out of the community or six hundred. So I'd like to have a little better understanding of that.
Here, David.
Just as a follow up on what Commissioner Keller said. I'm guilty of saying I got a lot of phone calls at times too, so I may not have a number. Thank you.
Okay. I have no further comments today. Uh this be the final public participation, anybody wishing to participate at this time. We've come forward, you have three minutes to speak, state your name for the record. Anybody on Zoom? Nobody in the room? And the next question would be, do we have a closed session?
Yes, we do.
We do, okay. Um. So if that's the case, then uh our regular meeting is adjourned. We will do a closed session. Um do we want to kick lunch? No. You've got to go to your meeting, yeah. So what what would you, what's your brothers lunch or?
Josh, how long we have to be in there?
Fifteen minutes? Yeah, let's let's have the closed session then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.